Good evening, and welcome to the Murphy's City Board of Education meeting. We will all stand to the pledge of allegiance and stand for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to all, and if I could get an approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, good evening and good day to you.
Good evening. Thank you. It's my pleasure to present to you the names of both the district teachers of the year and also the school teachers of the year, and we actually have a regional teacher of the year. But I'm going to call their names. I know that previously tonight we had a celebration for them. There are a couple who are here, so when I call your names, I'd like you to stand. But let me go through the names, because these are very special people indeed. From Bellwood Bowden Preschool, we have Cheryl Schmidt. Black Fox Elementary, the teachers of the year are Jennifer Clooney and John Simmons. Bradley Academy, teachers of the year Stephanie Turner, Allison Payne. Caseon Lane Academy, Martha Canada and Julie Olaf. Reese Rogers Discovery School, Lori Turnbow and Laura Taylor. Irma Siegel Elementary, Margie Page and Kevin Templeton. Hobgood Elementary, Janice McLean and Dr. Tammy Grisard. John Pittard, Cheryl Craig and Ashley Stone. Mitchell Nelson Primary, Robin Bailey. Mitchell Nelson Elementary, Tony Leathers. Northfield Elementary, Sarah Catalano and Karen Godwin. And Scales Elementary, we have Ray Sean Torres and Janice Gilbert. And I'm very pleased to announce that Stephanie Turner and Allison Payne, both from Bradley Academy, are the system teachers of the year, and then Allison Payne is also a regional teacher of the year. So we're very, very proud of those teachers. They do a tremendous job for us and Murphy's were a city, and they do a great job for the children. They certainly are passionate about it. I'm amazed at our teachers and what they do for children. It's just really remarkable. We hear all the negatives in the newspaper, and certainly the media has not been very kind to education, but I'll tell you, our teachers are very, very special, because without them, there would be no other professions. I'd like to ask Cheryl Harris if she would come forward, please, and give us an update on the foundation education celebration?
Good evening. This will be very brief, but I can tell you that we had a very successful excellence in education celebration, March the 11th, at Stones River Country Club. The school this year that we recognized was Northfield, and they just did a fantastic job of a display that they had made with every child in the school participating. Each child had a drawing of themselves along the greenway, and they had Bart Gordon, who was our honoree, leading the race along the greenway. So it was very cute, very effective. We really appreciate Dr. Lloyd and the fine group of singers that they had and all that they did for the excellence in education celebration. It looks like that we're going to have a profit of about $53,000, and that's a remarkable amount during these times, as you all know. That money, as has been mentioned before, goes to both parity to our schools, who have greater than 50 percent free and reduced lunch population, and the three-fourths of it goes to our teachers for teacher grants for math and science. So we're very proud of this event. We thank you for your support, supported the foundation, and I think probably they'll want to come and give a more final update as we get all of the numbers in. But thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl, for your leadership in that. She has put in many hours, and I certainly appreciate that, and Cheryl also works with the teachers of the year program. Your first budget session will be April the 5th at 6:30. Your second session will be April the 12th at 6:30. These are, of course, study sessions in preparation for passing the budget. Congratulations to Hobgood teacher Chick Nitter, who has received funding from NASA to take two students to Cocoa Beach for the NASA Explorer Schools Student Symposium. The two students attending, Deanna Stem and Shantoria Simmons, will present on the effect of the objects albedo has on its temperature. I have no clue, I'm sorry, going to have to re-study that. Where is that teacher? Neither student has flown or seen the ocean before, so this is certainly an honor for them, and we thank Chick for his work. Congratulations to Discovery School teacher, Ms. Elizabeth McPhee, who was selected as this year's best mannered teacher by the Rutherford County National League of Junior Cotillion. And thanks to Ms. Luanne Fox, who is an MDA at Mitchell Nelson Primary, who came to the rescue of a child who was choking at lunch. Ms. Fox's knowledge of the hymn certainly proved valuable, and that's just one of the valuable resources that she brings to her work at Mitchell Nelson Primary. We'd like to thank the Margaret Artabadian Writing Center at MTSU and the students associated with that, who participated in the collection and donation of over 1,000 books to the Bellwood Bowden Preschool Parenting Center. Special recognition to Scales principal, Keth Trenton Stevens, and teacher Pam East, who will be presenting at the Title I West Tennessee Directors Conference. The topic will be closing the achievement gap by using data to drive instruction. And congratulations to another principal, Barbara Sales, who has been selected by the State Department of Education to be participating in highly effective educator study. The principals there were chosen because of their effectiveness in impacting student learning, so we certainly congratulate Barbara for that with her T-vas gains, as we all are aware. She has done a magnificent job there. We have one final item of communication, and that is to let you know that Mitchell Nelson Primary has been selected as Read to Succeed City School of the Year. So that school will be honored at the Celebration, the Read to Succeed Annual Celebration. Those are your communication items.
Thank you. You have a question, Mr. Campbell?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. We're now ready for our consent items. Is there a motion for the approval of consent items?
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Action items, Dr. Gilbert?
Your first action item is approval of the Director of Schools Evaluation Instrument, and I'd like for Tammy, if you would come forward, please.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Chairman Wade and members of the board appreciate you asking TSBA to assist you all in your development of the superintendent evaluation. If you would turn to your packets, all of you have been provided the proposed evaluation instrument. I've spoken with each of you individually and worked several hours with Dr. Gilbert on coming up with an evaluation instrument. I do want to say this, that this evaluation instrument really is an instrument that provides the community an opportunity to see how well your system is doing. It should be a time of celebration, and it's also an evaluation of Dr. Gilbert and her staff and their performance, but it really is an instrument that will show the community, here are the things that our board has in their five-year plan of what we want our system to be like and the accomplishments. So if we can focus on that as the objective of the evaluation. And I know that we tend to look at evaluation as a punitive thing, but this is really not the purpose of an evaluation. Chairman Wade, can we go through each of the sections, entertain questions? I know Dr. Gilbert has, and I'm going to call on her to make some comments about some of these items, but based on my communications with you all, Section A, the Appendix A, is an administrator's perception of the director's performance objectives. It was pretty unanimous that the board wanted to see some type of evaluation of Dr. Gilbert's performance by administrators. Some of you wanted the entire system to evaluate. I personally believe that the best assessment of Dr. Gilbert would be from the central office staff and the principals. That's who she works with on a day-to-day basis. We'll get to the other, I think you were wanting an assessment of what the other employees of the school system had to say. I think that may be more toward a job satisfaction survey, but when we get into Part III, let's talk about that as a board, to see what really the objective behind a survey of all employees, what your end goal is, because I think if you're going to take the time to ask your employees to complete a survey, you need to decide as a board upfront, what are we going to do with the information? What's the purpose of it? But I really believe, to be fair to Dr. Gilbert and to the system, the administrators' portion, I would recommend, you can do what you like, but I would recommend that Part A would be only the administrators and the central office and the principals. So I would entertain any questions over page two, which is the administrators' perceptions. The rating scale, based on the comments that I had from all of you, it was clear to me that you wanted a evaluation scale of probably one to four, so that's where the rating scale came from, is just talking with you, we can change that. I know on the sample that we gave you was M for met, you know, there's different rating scales, whatever you want to do, we just need to be clear upfront, the one we want to use. So if you want to change that, that's totally up to you. Part two, which is Appendix B, that begins on page three, these are what I call general standards, that any superintendent should possess these skills to be able to perform these objectives that are outlined here. I did get comments from the board that we added, and I indicated to you all those items in the packet, that we added to this section under Staff and Personnel Relationships, finds a good balance between time in the office and time in the school. I think that was the only one, is that correct, Dr. Gilbert? Oh, and number six, under Board Relationship, is accessible to the board. So those are the two items that we added, and so I'll entertain questions on Part two. And Dr. Gilbert, if there's anything that you'd like to add, please do, that I did not mention. Okay. I must be doing a really good job. Appendix C are those annual specific objectives, and these items begin on page five. I know that you all wanted to ensure that Dr. Gilbert's evaluation be based on test scores. I know we've got our new teacher and principal evaluation, and it would be only fair that superintendent's evaluation be based on the same criteria. You also mentioned that, and rightfully so, the master plan. I do know that your master plan needs to be updated, so as we go through these objectives, I'm going to ask Dr. Gilbert, because there are some items that, when she began as the director, that had already, you decided you were not going to do, so we need to go through those and take those out. I added an objective in here that the board schedule a time to update your master plan. So we'll go through those objectives, and Dr. Gilbert, if it's okay with you, we'll start with Objective One, and you make any comments that you'd like to make on if we need to make some changes to that one.
Okay. The master plan actually starts at your Performance Objective 14 on page nine. The master plan does have a date on it of 2008 to 2011. The one thing that I think is important for you to know is that Performance Objective 14 through 17 really refer to Goal One of the master plan, so I would like, I suggest for your assistance, really, that we insert those goals, because the first goal has to do with children. The way it reads is, "All children will enter kindergarten prepared for instruction based on the Tennessee Blueprint for Learning." Well, I think we need to probably knock out the Blueprint for Learning and really talk about standards, but I do think it's important that you understand that 14 through 17 really refer to basically preschool, or at least from the time to kindergarten. So that is something you need to know, because when it talks about involvement of parents, you're going to find that objective here and also later on, too. So 14 through 17 refer to Goal One of the master plan. On page 11, Performance Objectives 18 through 26 refer to Goal Two, which has to do with the elementary school years, the primary and intermediate, because that particular goal reads, "Primary and intermediate students will achieve at their maximum potential." So I do think that needs to be inserted. The next goal begins on page 14 with Performance Objective 27 and goes through Performance Objective 33. That particular goal reads, "School educators, parents, and personnel throughout the school system will be well-prepared and responsible for improved student performance, implementing a comprehensive curriculum focusing on academics, the arts, and total wellness." And there is one correction that does need to be made in order to follow the master plan exactly, and that is under Performance Objective 28. Those two should be one objective, which reads, "Increase in the effectiveness of schools as measured by local performance goals." Then Goal Four begins on page 16 and is for Performance Objectives 34 through 36.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can we go back to what you just said about Performance Objective 28? It should, what you said, it should read what?
Increase in the effectiveness of schools as measured by local performance goals.
Oh, God.
And what I did with this, Ms. Phillips, is when I was asked about the master plan, I'm taking this strictly verbatim out of the master plan, so that will be easy to reference and to find that correction. Goal Four begins on page 16 for Objectives 34 through 36, and it reads, "State-of-the-art technology will be integrated to improve student learning." So those are the corrections that I noted, that are differences between the master plan and what you find here in the evaluation. And again, I think that's important, because with those particular sections, you're going to need to know whether you're talking about preschool, whether you're talking about instruction, whether you're talking about the case six.
Any questions, Mr. Campbell?
Dr. Brissom, what is the possibility of putting a number five in this, like, that would say not applicable or do not know? There are things in here that I cannot, at this point in time, give an evaluation, because I don't know.
Right.
And I don't want to leave, you know, you don't want to give one on the low end, or give one on the high end, or give one in the middle, if you're not aware of what we're talking about.
You can definitely make changes to the rating scale, but here's what I would suggest. Before the school board completes your evaluation instrument of Dr. Gilbert, I would ask that Dr. Gilbert complete the evaluation and make comments on each item to let you know what has been done, because there's some things you won't know unless she tells you, "We have met Objective Number 16, Objective 13, we are in, you know, we've made it halfway, we still need to do such and such." But I would ask that, before you all complete your evaluation instrument later on, that Dr. Gilbert prepare a report that I will give to you all when I send you the blank evaluation instrument that you'll have there, so you'll know where you are on each of the objectives.
That's good.
Would you also include in that, or in changes in this document, like, Goal Four is Objective 33 through whatever, Goal Three is Objectives, whatever the numbers are, and I can go back?
We can. Objectives one through, let's see, eight, nine, through 11 are in regards to your, they came from the report card, the items that, the different items for No Child Left Behind and those value added. And then I added Performance Objective 12, which is to update your five-year plan. 13, we need to talk about the Job Satisfaction Survey, if you really want to do that. And then, as Dr. Gilbert has indicated, 14 through the end are related directly to your master plan, and we can definitely put out beside each of those objectives what goal in the master plan that they are related to.
Even if in the broad scope of it, if you listed, like, before you get into Performance Objective 14, you put master plan and whatever part of this, and then if it's Objective 19 through 25, Objective, you know, Master Plan Number Two, Goal, that sort of thing.
We can definitely do that.
I think that would be helpful for me. I'm not sure about everybody else, but it would for me.
Ms. Phillips and then Mr. Rehneer.
I'm just curious and wondering, Dr. Brissom, if it would be in any way beneficial to address the five-year plan changes before we did the evaluation?
Well, I mean, in your experience, you know, how much will that impact her, you know? Well, that's where Dr. Gilbert and I had our discussion, in that you've asked that her evaluation be based on the master plan, and it hasn't been updated. So you wanted to be evaluated on those items, so as a board, you need to decide if, I mean, she's confident doing all of these things. However, typically, we would be doing this evaluation, and next year, you all will be on the right timeline. Typically, you develop your evaluation instrument prior to the school year to say, "Dr. Gilbert, we would like the following to be accomplished in the upcoming school year," and develop those things from there. But this year, we're trying, since it's our first year, we're kind of doing things a little bit backwards, a little bit, in that the years passed and we're developing the instrument, so.
And I'm comfortable with the master plan as it is, because I was aware of what the master plan was. And when, really, for us to develop an effective plan for the next five years, it's going to take quite a bit of time.
Yeah, that was my concern.
It'll take quite a bit of time.
But I wanted to make sure you were...
I'm comfortable with this. There are some things in here, for example, Blueprint for Learning, there was, and when you talk about the preschools, there's some changes, but I think there's no question that I have an understanding of what the master plan says and really have directed, and the school system has moved toward that, so I'm comfortable with that.
I just wanted to make sure it was a fair evaluation.
I'm comfortable with that. I do, we do need to take a look at a new master plan. Frankly, I think there's some real advantages for our having waited at this point, because we do have, when I came on board, I talked about professional learning communities, I talked about partnerships, and I think we've seen those develop now, and I think that now we are ready, and I think we've reached the level where the principals, the teachers, the community, we're comfortable really to say, "Okay, here's where we are now, there's a foundation, now let's form that next step." And so I think, really, the timing, we're fine as far as the master plan and really looking forward. I think it probably would have been a mistake for us to have moved before now. You have a master plan that's in place from 2008 to 2011, so I think we're fine, but I think over the next six months even, and it probably will take that long, very frankly, for us to move forward after the budget is adopted, then to go ahead and move forward into that, because I think the district's ready to do that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
And we can remove that item from her objectives. Now, I'm recommending that Part A and B be administered here and ready for our Aqual Meeting, but in order to be fair to Dr. Gilbert, you don't have any test scores available to do Part Three, so that's why I put in my notes to you all that Part Three would be conducted in the summer or fall, whenever the test scores, we don't know, we're at the mercy of the State Department on that. When the scores come out, then we'll do Part Three, because that's the only fair way I can see to administer this instrument, is to wait on Part Three. I know your, Dr. Gilbert's evaluation says that you'll conduct evaluation of her in spring of 2011, and I think we can accomplish that by doing A and B, but hold off on C into the summer or fall, whenever the test scores get here.
Mr. Rehneer?
Yes, I totally agree, Mr. Campbell. I looked through it pretty extensively, and I have some real concerns, because I know that I don't know all the answers. That's why we have administrative staff, and we have teachers, administrators, and so forth, and I would have to take a lot of time to go by and talk to a lot of those folks in order to answer some of the questions in this particular evaluation instrument. So I would like to see something in there as well, that either has not applicable, or, you know, because I don't think it's, like Mr. Campbell said, I don't think it's fair to evaluate somebody when you really don't know the skill set in this particular area. So I think we need to add something on the evaluation instrument that would reflect that. I think that's very important.
The only, you can do what you want, but I think that as a board, to effectively evaluate her, that's why I'm asking that the director prepare a report for you to let you know, "I have met this goal, we have not yet met Objective X, and therefore..." Because if you're a new school board member and just got on the board, you won't know a lot of these things, but as a board, your job is to evaluate, and I think to be fair to Dr. Gilbert, you're going to have to rely on her report and maybe asking a few questions. I mean, you can do what you want, it's your instrument, but I think to be fair to her, because you might get a lot of don't knows, and that's not a good assessment.
And I think as far as the master plan itself, I'm very comfortable with your going ahead and assessing that part of it, even though it is part of Appendix C, I'm comfortable with that, with the goal, because if I haven't by this time, already started working on some of these, then you need somebody else anyway. So with, as far as, as far as I'm concerned, with the Performance Objectives that are specifically related to the master plan, which would really start at Performance Objective 18, looking through there, I'm comfortable with all of that, because that's what your plan is, and I should have known that plan when I took this job. As far as, as far as the remainder of this, I think when I look at Performance Objective 13, the Job Satisfaction Survey, certainly that's something that has not been done, and also the updated five-year plan, which is Objective 12. The rest of those previous to that, that have to do with test scores, I can certainly see the waiting on that, but I should be able to give you data for the master plan.
Ms. Phillips and then Mr. Campbell?
I appreciate Dr. Brissom's recommendation that we get a report from Dr. Gilbert regarding the status on these particular items. I think that's a great idea. I don't see why we can't do both, though, have that report and have a spot for not applicable, or, you know, a mutual, a mutual spot on the evaluation document, because that's what I've heard two of the board members suggest, and, you know, I don't know why we couldn't do both, but I'm okay either way, so.
Mr. Campbell?
When you go back and tally up, that may be a loose term, but that's a term I'm going to use, that's what I'm saying. When you go back and tally up all these numbers and what everybody's checked and that sort of thing, then how does that tally up? Do you go back and figure up the total number of fours that she may have gotten in one category, or the total number of threes?
That's what this board needs to decide. You need to decide if I'm taking an average overall score on all three sections. You also need to decide if you're doing that, what is a satisfactory score? Is it a 2.53? That's something the board's going to have to decide. You also have to decide if each section has the same weight. You may want to weight Section A, B, and C different weights, you know, 50% might be. I personally would recommend that Part C have more percentage assigned to it than the other two sections, but that's something the board needs to decide upfront. What is a satisfactory score, and how are we going to determine that score, if we're going to give a percentage to Section A, and B, and C, and so forth?
So if we were to have... So, if we were to have a number five that says don't know or not applicable, how would that be figured in to the tally up average? Would you just disregard that one? That person's?
I personally would, but that's why I don't recommend a don't know, because I personally believe it's the board's responsibility to evaluate, and it's your responsibility to find the answers. And to me, you could have a lot of don't knows, and I wouldn't, I'd just toss those out. I mean, otherwise, you'd have to give it a zero, which is going to affect her score, which is not fair.
Ms. Duggan.
Was this the one I'm understanding?
Oh, okay. Um, I'm in agreement with you. I for sure don't think we need a not applicable because everything in here would be applicable to our director. That's why it's on there. Before, I know we have gotten a written report from our director that lets us know how certain things have been fulfilled that we might not know. And that way, then you could ask questions if you had further, you know, needed further information. So, if Dr. Gilbert's going to give us that, which that's been stated this evening, I really think that will take care of the questions that maybe Mr. Rannier and Mr. Campbell have.
Right.
Because they don't have a lot of information.
Yeah.
The other thing, and this is just a, just a minor thing, but I was the understanding that the federal government had changed No Child Left Behind back to ESEA, using the original acronym for that. So, do we not need to have that in the document? I know that's a minor issue, but.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Grissom? Bishop Y.C.'s topic, and answer questions for us. And also, board, Dr. Gilbert is available to us. If there are questions or something you're not sure about, or you, maybe it's not fully answered the way you wanted in the document she's going to give us, please pick up the phone to be fair and be able to grade her accordingly. Pick up the phone or text her, but she, she takes. And she will call you. And if you can, and there's a reason she's out, check with Mrs. Ridley, but do give her the benefit of the doubt of asking the question you're not sure about to be fair. This instrument is here. She's going to give us something, but sometimes it's a good phone call and let her tell you. Because Dr. Gilbert couldn't write it all on paper what she'd like to say, so maybe then I do the calling.
Let me ask this. Dr. Grissom, when would I need that report to the, to the board?
I think our timeline, um, was to have at the April meeting, the results to you all at the work session. Has that been confirmed, that date?
You're talking about the retreat?
Uh-huh.
On the 30th?
April 30th?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'll be administering that, um, in time for me to tabulate. So, it'll be 1st of April.
What would, what would be fair for both? Now, it's not, Dr. Gilbert needs the time to get this stuff together. We want to be fair about it.
I mean, I, you all are the ones that told me you wanted to do it at the April retreat. I'm, I'm good with any date.
We need, when, when did you need it back? How much?
I need at least a week to, to tabulate, and because some of your evaluations, I'll get back, and I'll have questions, and I'll need to call you and kind of help facilitate that. If some of you left, didn't mark an item, I'll call and say, "Did you just skip it or not know?" And.
Okay. Ms. Duggan.
What if we, if Dr. Gilbert, like she could have it ready by the work session, which is two weeks from tonight?
That, that, I can do that. I just, I need to, we're working, as you know, on the budget, so I need, I promised Mr. Anderson that I would not do anything tomorrow, but working budget. I can have it, I can have it a week from Friday, whatever that day is.
The 12th work session.
Question.
Mr. Campbell.
Are we in a hurry for this? I mean, have we got to have this done by sudden such a date? I mean, I, I think we told, we gave you a date.
Right.
But.
Your, your, Dr., you did give me the date. Her contract states that she will have an evaluation, her first evaluation, in the spring of 2011. That's what the contract says.
The spring is not over until winter is commenced.
Whatever way you want to define it, it's good with me.
Till summer is commenced, I guess it is. I get my stuff together.
I was just working off the dates that you had given me. So, I'm, we can do it next year.
Well, I'm, I'm not in, in objecting to that date, but at the same time, I'm, I would not object to taking it a month after that. I mean, let's face it, folks, we've got budget that she's involved in big time. We're going to be involved in it big time, uh, which is, is good. That's where we ought to be. Uh, I don't know that another month is going to break the bank or kill us if we waited that long. That's just my opinion.
And if both parties agree, Dr. Gilbert and the board, you could wait to all three items and wait to the summer and fall if you wanted to do that, and just do it all after the test scores come in.
Ms. Duggan.
I guess my question is, if we wait that long, then with what was put in her contract, that she'd be evaluating the spring, that concerns me because then next fall is not the spring. I mean, I'm, we could easily postpone it to May, um, but I have reservations in changing it that late because then it's not in accordance with what is in her contract.
If I can have a couple of weeks, I'll have this ready for you.
Okay. So, I would say if Dr. Gilbert's good with being able to do it by then, we move forward.
Just wanted to clarify the dates. So, if Dr. Gilbert gets us that item on, what, what day would that be?
12.
April 12th. And when would we?
We may.
And then on the 30th, we would go over the results with Dr. Grissom? Is that?
Yeah, and you got to give me a little bit of time to tabulate, so.
So, somewhere between the 12th and whatever date we have to get that to you.
Well, if we get it the 12th, why don't we not go ahead and forward it on to?
Well, I think Dr. Gilbert was going to have the report ready to give to you all on the 12th, so give you all a few days to complete the evaluation.
We have about a week there.
I'll, I'll have it to you a week from Friday. I feel like I'm in an option. I'll, I'll have it. I'll have it. I can do that.
April the 8th.
April the 8th.
I still think it's too quick. I hate to be that way with y'all, but I do. I'd rather, I'd rather see us take our time and be able to do a consensus and do a good job. And I don't think that Dr. Gilbert is going to complain if we don't do it until May. He gives her some time with budget and other things that she's going through. Can I make a motion?
Yes, you can always make a motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we wait to do this in, uh, the meeting in May.
Second.
Whatever that date is.
What is that date, Mrs. Ridley?
24th.
May 24th as a second. Questions? Ms. Duggan?
Are you referring to our work session in May or the board meeting in May?
Uh, the board meeting in May.
So, that's 24th.
And then we will have all of the criteria, at least for the first two parts, by that time.
That, does, I have a question?
Yes.
Does that, that means that we would cancel then the April 30th date and do that, you know, probably in May? I will be out of town, um, Memorial Day weekend, so.
I'll see what, yeah.
Well, Mrs. Ridley will have to hold the board on the next day. Now, the board meeting is set, but, uh, that weekend, you would have to hold the board for me, and that is the holiday weekend.
So, you're asking for a new retreat date to do the evaluation?
Well, we're still dancing around on the motion.
And that's what I wanted to clarify, yeah.
We're still dealing with questions about changing it to the board meeting on the 24th versus the work session. Board members, is there any questions about, you had our motion, Mr. Campbell has presented his motion, change it to the 24th, Mr. Rannier has seconded. Ms. Duggan had a question, and so did Mrs. Phillips.
What would, um, how would it change the timetable if we were to say instead of the board meeting, the work session?
That's okay with me. April, uh, May 10th?
May 10th.
That's fine with me.
That would just give more options for retreat dates, what I'm thinking.
If Mr. Campbell will change his motion, I'll.
I'll change it to May 10th.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Questions? Are there any questions about the May 10th work session changing to that date? Now, this is for giving Dr. Gilbert time to get that information in and getting it to us to get the, um, evaluation done. Okay?
Now, may I express?
Yes, ma'am.
The only, I, I'm, I'm good either way. I don't have any strong preferences. Whatever the will of the board is, I'm fine with. The only concern I have is then setting a retreat date, then it looks like that would be almost in June, and it's really hard to gather everyone once the summer months start hitting. And I just wanted to share that thought. People have different vacation schedules and commitments.
When does summer come in? June what?
20th.
20th?
21st.
Do you think maybe since we do have in the?
Hey, we're still in the spring.
Uh, that's what I was asking. Making sure that we stay with, and Ms. Duggan has brought that up, that it is in her contract, that we were going to do it in the spring. That's why I was trying to get a date that everybody would be available.
Chairman Wade.
Yes, ma'am.
We're talking about just part A and B by May the 10th. The items in part C won't be done until summer or fall, so Dr. Gilbert's report basically is not due. If, if you all, you've not voted to, but my suggestion was you wait for part three to summer or fall. So, part A is administrators and part B is those general standards. So, I don't think you're going to need a report on some of those items in part, because the only part the board would have to be completing is part B. So.
I would like to go ahead, though, and, and take care of the objectives that have to do with the master plan, which would be starting with objective 14. I think that we need to go ahead and get that, that accomplished if we could, Tammy.
I'm, I'm just trying to be fair to Dr. Gilbert.
And I appreciate that.
Uh, Dr. Gilbert, I am interested in your input. Um, I wonder if you have a preference, whether you'd rather go ahead with the established dates in April or, um?
That's entirely up to the board. Uh, what?
Does, does any, does either one work better for you?
No. It, it, really, I'll be fine either way. I'll, I always, whatever deadline I'm going to be on, I'm going to meet it.
Okay.
All righty. We, we've had the, the motion on the table is May 10th, but let me get clarification. Is this for all of it or just for part C?
Part A and B.
Part A.
See, we can't do the test results come back.
Okay, delay of part A and B. All right, Ms. Ridley, call the roll, please, ma'am.
Hey, Dr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Rannier?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
So, just to make sure I'm clear, May the 10th, I'll report the results of part A and B at your work session.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you understand a different way?
I have a question. I, I would like to request that we, um, ask City Channel 3 to tape that session, so it'll be, um, so it'll be public access.
Then you're suggesting we meet up here if it's clear?
Mm-hmm.
Then, Mrs. Ridley, if you will check that for us and see if they're available?
Now, that, is that what we were going to do at the retreat? Is that what you're talking about, that what?
We were going to discuss it at the retreat, but it was not going to be taped. No, Channel 3 was not coming out.
But what she's doing on the 10th, was that, is that the same thing as what we were going to do at the retreat?
Yes.
Okay, well, then forget that. I thought it was the other part.
Could, could I ask for clarification, please, Chairman Wade?
Yes, ma'am.
Then my understanding is that we are looking at just A and B and not at the section of, of appendix C that deals with the master plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I hope that's the way everybody's understood it. Are you still?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I got it.
All right.
Chairman Wade, I, but Dr. Gilbert was asking if you all could go ahead and do.
Oh.
Um, she was asking that she would like part A, not to, you can speak for yourself, Dr. Gilbert, but what I understood is that she would like A, B, and then objectives starting at 14, go ahead and do those now, and then for the summer or fall, objectives one through 13. Is that correct, Dr. Gilbert?
That's right. I think it's important because we are going to be looking at the master plan, and we know we're going to be starting that. So, I think if we're looking at the evaluation, let's, let's go ahead and do the evaluation on the master plan as it now stands, and go ahead and, and get that part out of the way so that we're not hanging that over into the fall.
Okay.
And those start with 14.
14 through 36, correct, Dr. Gilbert?
Right.
Sorry.
All right. So, it would be appendix A, appendix B, and then the, uh, objective, performance objective 14 to the end.
Are there any questions, board members? If not, we'll.
It's clear.
All right. Thank you. Do you have anything else, Dr. Grissom?
Actually, I do.
Okay.
What did you all decide about objective 12, which is to update the five-year plan? Do you want to remove that? And then objective 13 about the job satisfaction survey, which I'm not crazy about a job satisfaction survey, but most of you all indicated that you wanted something like that. I just need to, to know what the end goal of the job satisfaction survey is.
Ms. Duggan. I would like to do one, however, I don't think it should be part of the evaluation. It should be information to the board, but I would, uh, prefer that that would be removed from the evaluation. And number 12, update the school system five-year plan, that would be after we actually do her evaluation. Correct?
It's whenever you want. It needs to be done, right.
Because the timeframe is that we need to update, so absolutely, that needs to be done.
Right.
So, I'm fine with, because if we leave that in there.
Okay, so remove objective 12 and 13. Okay.
Is there a set of cons?
Speaker, do we need to, do we need a?
It would be better if we didn't already made a motion.
I move that we remove objective 12 and 13 from the evaluation process. However, do a performance satisfaction, I mean, a job satisfaction survey for informational purposes, but not for the purpose of the director's evaluation.
A second?
Certainly. There's been a motion, a second. I've got questions.
Um, I have a comment. I wanted to make sure that when we do a job, I don't know who, how, what, would, who would be, um, the authority over the, uh, job satisfaction document, but I just want to make sure that the, you know, you can, the wording of any kind of question can be so, can skew the answer, and I would want to make sure that it would always be neutral in, in the wording of the job satisfaction document so that we can get as relevant and as pertinent and as, um, um, authentic a response to the questions as possible.
And just be mindful of, we're in a time of a lot of unknowns right now with all the reforms going on with tenure, the new teacher evaluation, um, instrument that has yet to be determined. So, I think if you'd asked teachers two years ago, um, the same survey, you're going to get different results. So, I'm not sure that now is the time for a job satisfaction. You might want to wait and see how things play out in the legislature. Let, let the system work, the new teacher eval, there's going to be a lot of kinks, I'm sure, in the new teacher evaluation. And so, there's a lot of things going on in all school districts across the state, and I would highly recommend to this board you would highly recommend to this board you hold off on that and let Dr. Gilbert implement all the things you have to implement with ESEA, No Child Left Behind, and all the new reforms.
Okay. Ms. Ridley, call the roll, please. Oh, wait a minute, sorry.
Hey, Ms. Duggan's, um, motion. Uh, did you have any particular immediacy to that section?
No, I think that the survey, I mean, if it's not administered until a year from now, or even a year and a half from now, I think that would be plenty early enough. I would really like to just leave when that survey is administered to the discretion of the director. Because I think Dr. Grissom is correct that there are so many reforms and changes going on currently that regardless of how well the questions were written, right now, I don't think you would get an accurate picture because there are so many unknowns and teachers are, you know, they're really torn right now because they don't know really what the expectations are going to be.
And I think that would give the board time because you all need to review the instrument that's going to be administered and vote on it as a board and be very careful with the questions, that you're asking questions with an end in mind. Why are you asking the question? What benefit is it going to be to Dr. Gilbert in the system? So, you, people do not like to have surveys that are just going to be put to the, over on a shelf. Let's make them useful and administered in a way that is going to be helpful to the system.
Just wondering if it's not going to be for a year, year and a half, do, is that needed in that motion, do you think? Or would you feel more comfortable if it stays in the motion, that part of it?
I don't really think, the only thing that maybe I would add to the motion is that it would just be up to the director's discretion of when she feels the climate is best, when some of the dust has settled from the legislature and the State Board and places for her to bring it back to us about she feels this is a time to do that survey. I'm comfortable with that.
Any more comments?
No.
Ms. Ridley, who'll call the roll?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Rehne?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Yes.
And I'm really not trying to dominate, but you don't have to do it tonight, but eventually you all are going to have to tell me how you want me to tabulate the evaluation. And you all can do that some other time, but I'll need to know, I mean, I can, if you're going to give a certain percentage to A, B, whatever, um, I think you need to determine the guidelines prior to the evaluation and not wait till after the results are in.
Mr. Rehne and Ms. Duggan?
Well, based on our discussion tonight, I don't have a problem with leaving it like it is if, in fact, Dr. Gilbert's going to give us kind of a, a letter outlining some of her accomplishments as it, as it relates to the evaluation process because those of us, as you pointed out, that are new on the board are going to have a, probably a less opportunity to grade her accordingly. So, if she's going to kind of do a document for us, I don't have a problem with just leaving the survey four steps like it's in the document itself.
Ms. Duggan?
I think what Dr. Grissom is asking us is that we need to decide how much each section will be weighted.
If you want it all the same, um, you know, we can't do the overall until the summer, fall, so you've got time. What I report to May 10th will be just, I'll just do an, I'll tell you how many fours she got on, and then we'll have to do the overall in the summer and the fall. So, we have time to decide that, but...
I would like for you to give us something in writing, just a short recommendation of when you look at the sections, what your recommendation be for a weight for each one because I do think the sections need to be weighted. If you could have that for us before our next work session, which is two weeks from this evening, and maybe at that meeting we could, as a board, discuss. Would that be possible?
Yes, and I also think you need to include Dr. Gilbert and how she feels on the percentages as well.
Well, maybe the two of you could have some conversation prior to then and give us some feedback so then we could work on it that evening.
So, that's in two weeks, your next...
It's, I think it's two weeks from this evening, our work session. Is that correct?
Mr. Campbell?
Two weeks, okay. Dr. Gilbert, I'll begin with you.
We don't worry, we have to worry if we're not, she'll have to be elected by that time or not, do we?
We hope that's going to die in the Senate. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grissom.
Dr. Gilbert, action item B?
Yes, your second action item is approval of a textbook adoption committee, and I'd like, as, as usual, for the people that work on these things, I'd really like for them to talk with you, so I'd like for Carissa and Karen to come forward, please.
Good evening. Um, as you know, we've talked about in our work session that as of right now, Murfreesboro City does not have a current textbook for reading. We are, we have right now a 2001 textbook, which is, um, at best scattered throughout the system. We don't have full sets. They're not easy to get. They're very expensive to get. The main thing is that they're not aligned to the new state standards, and pulling pieces and parts is kind of what our teachers have been asked to do, to come up with a 90-minute block of reading every day. And I'm a reading specialist, and that'd be very difficult for me to do every day, to pull appropriate reading material every single day. So, what we're asking is that we have a textbook committee to begin the process of adopting a textbook. The new textbooks now support differentiated instruction and really help teachers see all parts of the reading process, all five areas of reading, and it's laid out in a way that matches the standards. So, that's one of the things that we wanted to, that's kind of the background of the rationale of why we needed that. So, I'm going to let Karen talk a little bit about that process and what it would look like.
One of the things that our challenge is, is to make sure that we do have that guaranteed curriculum in every classroom. And when you have a, a system-wide difference in materials from classroom to classroom, then that's a little harder for us to do as a district, especially coming up with a scope and sequence that we can ensure that the students are learning to read as we want them to do in the district. So, um, it's going to be two years until our state adopts reading textbooks. This year, as you know, you've just approved the math adoption, and it's, it is unusual to ask for two textbook adoptions in one year. But our concern is if we wait for two years without this curriculum, we, we may be in worse shape than we are right now with reading. We've seen some progress. We've seen some things where we're bringing in pieces and parts, we're bringing in programs to try to solve some of the holes that we have in our current reading adoption. But we all know that the best way to teach reading is to make sure that your instruction is integrated, and so a, a reading curriculum textbook would help us do that. There's a couple of things that are happening at the national level that makes this a viable recommendation for us at this point. In July, Tennessee joined in with a national group to adopt the core standards. So, our standards are aligned with many other states in this country. And had this happened two years ago and we come to you, we would have been adopting a textbook that was very different than what our Tennessee standards are and what our students were going to be assessed on. But we do, can say with confidence that this alignment is going to be very close to what we have currently in Tennessee, and that it will be very much aligned once Tennessee moves to those core standards in a few years. I believe that the state says we're about 90% aligned with the core standards in reading. So, we're pretty close right now, and we feel like that that's a, a good match for us. As it, um, I've tried to inquire and figure out if this would be possible, where we could get the resources, what kind of books were available. And as it turns out, in North Carolina, they're looking at a reading adoption right now, and they're aligned with the core standards. So, it would be a current textbook. It wouldn't be reaching back and getting an old textbook that Tennessee had adopted, but it would be a current textbook. And they have looked at textbooks at the state level in North Carolina and have recommended text that their school districts can choose from. And so, this gives us another layer of approval process. So, we're not out there on our own looking at this. We're looking at some materials that have been approved by another state that's looking at similar standards. And we are asking for a committee to come in and look at three series, and these are three that have been approved by North Carolina for their teachers to look at as well. So, those are, we want to look at Scott Forthman, The Reading Streets, McGraw-Hill, they have treasures, and Holton-Mifflin, and they have a program called Journeys. So, that's what we're asking at this point. Tonight, basically, you're going to be voting for us to select a committee or to approve a committee, and then we would actually come back with you, to you, with a budget resolution for the actual purchase of the textbooks as, after we finish this process.
Ms. Phillips?
Couple of questions, just educate me because this is not my area of expertise. How long is a textbook viable for, for a system?
Typically, in Tennessee, the textbook rotation is every six years. If we adopt this particular, at this time, we would hold this textbook for eight years rather than the six years. So, we would just basically be getting a two-year jump start on the textbook adoption. The textbooks that we have right now are 10 years old. So, that's, you know, it, it depends. It depends on the importance of the curriculum piece and what kind of resources you have to make that happen. I know that last year you looked at English Language Arts, and when, as I understand, when the textbook committee looked at the English Language Arts books, they felt like that they were pretty, what we had was pretty closely aligned. And so, the district made a decision not to purchase those books at this time. So, a lot, you have to look at your curricular needs and what resources that you currently have and let that influence your decision on when you do adopt.
And this question might be for Dr. Gilbert, Mr. Anderson. I know you don't have a specific, but what's the ballpark on a purchase like this typically?
They're looking at about $680,000.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Rehne?
Um, I'm a little confused. Are you recommending tonight two committees, two committees for reading?
No, just one. That, the document, there's two pages on that document. That's a state form, and it would only hold so many names, so we had to go over on the next page.
I got it. Okay, now, that, that's, that's cleared up.
We tried every way we could to trick that form into making it happen, and it just wouldn't happen.
Got you.
It's one committee on two pages.
Are there any other questions? Rehne?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the committee for looking at the textbook, textbook committee.
Just a second. Second. Been a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Rehne?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Speaking of passion.
What a peanut gallery without me.
I'm telling you. I'm sorry. I try to keep him quiet. I really do. It's just really...
Good.
By the way, I, I do have to, to mention, since we do have several of the principals here, and that's not something that they are required to do, but I can't tell you the respect I have for them. The last two principals' meetings that we have had have just been phenomenal. The last meeting that we had, I really realized that we're moving forward as a system, and they are on the same page. We are a school district instead of a district of 12 schools. Each school is individual, and each school is critically important and different. But I can't tell you the work that these principals have done over the last year. It's just been amazing. And today, we were privileged, most of you know how special Bob Aker is and what a renowned expert he is in the field of education. And he had recommended that we have two folks from Washington come down. Really, he considers that particular school, which is in the White River School District, to be the best in the nation, and it's called Mountain Meadow. And if you could have heard what they were saying, that we, we are so aligned with what they are doing. And they emphasized what a messy process it was, and that was their term, was messy in the very beginning of, of the work of the professional learning communities. And I think every principal that's here tonight would agree that it's certainly been a messy process. But, but I can't tell you how proud I was of them and, and how proud for the children of this school district with what these folks have done this last year. It's just been amazing. And I know that wasn't on the agenda, but since I have a microphone, I had to say that because it's been really remarkable working with them, and I appreciate so much their work. So, and thank you very much for approving the textbook adoption committee. That's critically important to our schools right now. Reports and information, you have the personnel update behind tab four and the monthly revenue and expenditures report behind tab five. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. This Friday is a very exciting day. Murfreesboro City Schools, we will be delivering your first draft to your budgets for the next school year. So, it's a highlight day in my career, so I always like to share that with you, the excitement. On the comparison of budgets, we are to the good at this point, 1,000, 1,404,499. Last year at this time, we were 25,528 to the good. So, as you can see, we have made some adjustments that have helped us keep our cash position in a, in a good spot. This is at the part of the year where it's 66.7, so we look for numbers and categories of 66.7 to make sure we're under that or over that if it's on the revenue side. And right now, on the revenue, we're at 67.0. So, that's very good. Sales tax is on target right now, is progressing towards an increase of about $350,000 more than we budgeted. Obviously, the economy is coming back in Murfreesboro, and the sales tax collections are up. We seem to be right on target for the property taxes, and one other good sign was business tax collections seem to be up $60,000. It's a very good sign for a community when business taxes is going up. So, revenue-wise, we, we seem to be in good shape. On the expenditure side, on the next page, of course, we're again looking at 66.7%, and we are at 64.3. So, we feel pretty good about that one as well. The district is, is doing fine right now, and as we, hopefully, will keep getting better as we come out of the, out of the recession. Does anyone have any questions for me? Mr. Rehne? On the expenditure page, four from the bottom, 78, line item 78, 810, 72, 810, you show expenditure of 803,215 under other support. Can you tell me what, what that other support is? Sure. Other support is the technology, and that's technology equipment. And what happens is we have to put it into a line item before we can either take it out of, um, fund balance or move it to another category. So, that's why, these will get adjusted as we go. That's why you might see when it's a glitch, that's over or under, and you'll see occasionally during the year, you'll see some that look like they're out of shape, and that's usually why.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Okay, thank you. The next, court behind tab six is our attendance. Our PTR for K through 3 is 18.39 to 1, and our PTR for 4 through 6 is 19.6 to 1. At this point, we are 43 students below, below our budgeted figure of 6890. Now, our principals' meeting today, principals were shouting out, "I got 10 more, I got four more, I got three more," and I was getting my abacus out, trying to figure out, which was, which was really good news to see that, that they're coming in. One of the things that we're really keeping on is special ed is growing, so we're, we're trying to keep an eye on that as we go through. It's, Northfield grew three special ed students in the month, and we grew seven over last month, so we're hoping that the last few months of the year will be, will be much stronger. It was a month that, then this report is for the month of February, that we had some illness, so our, our membership attendance was 94.4, which is typically about one point lower than normal for us. But other than that, the report seems to be keeping us right in line with where we should be as, as the numbers keep coming in. So, we're, we're hoping to get back to that 6890 number. Want to have any questions on that one? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Phillips?
No, it's not pertinent to that. It's just...
Okay. Mrs. Phillips brought to my attention that the April 30th board retreat is canceled. Ms. Ridley, if you'll send out a little note to remind the board members that I'm not here. Are there any questions for Mr. Rehne?
Mr. Anderson, I appreciate you giving us this Murfreesboro City Schools Fund Balance summary sheet that, that helps me a lot as I look, as I start looking, particularly as we look towards the budget. And I think I was maybe one of the ones that requested that, so I really appreciate that, and that gives us that in plenty of time before we get our proposed new budget for the new school year. So, I appreciate that. You're welcome. And Dr. Gilbert asked me to put it to... And Dr. Gilbert asked me to put at the bottom section for the last four years, so you can see what our fund balance has been doing in each category. That was a good idea. She had a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
You're welcome.
Other business for our next meeting? Ms. Doug?
This is not for our next meeting, but unless this is out of order, I'd like to, and if the board is in agreement for us to write a letter to the legislature, we did this once before, we might even be able to pull that same letter and just revise the dates, but concerning the current legislation about having elected directors of schools, I think this board has taken the stand in the past that we are for appointed directors of schools. I feel very strongly about that, and if the board is in agreement, I'd like for us to send a letter from the board stating that to the House and Senate Education Committees and whomever else.
No, I don't think that's out of order at all. I think the board would be in total agreement. If we get that letter done, we'll get it signed and get it sent. Is there any other business that we need to either talk about in our next session or? Wonderful.
Finally, finally coming before you quit. In regard to what Ms. Doug has said, I will tell you, you can go on the website and you can send those representatives...
Individually.
Individually, an email. I did that last weekend and told one of, two of them. At this point, I was, I got a phone call quick, for my help. They need to know not only how the board feels, but I also tell those of you that are in the audience, if you have a strong belief, you need to write those representatives and state senators to let them know how you feel.
Dr. Gilbert, do you have anything?
It's just a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, ma'am. We are adjourned.
Thank you.